Public hearing.
Just trying to pull up the agenda. Oh, um, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Um, that's, I, I will call the Tuesday, the fifteenth meeting to order at eleven AM. Let me just, I, oh, if you, yes, if you can pull it up on the screen, that makes my life easier. Um. Do we, yeah, let's, should we do finance for first? I don't know if there's any changes to the agenda?
Oh, Brian.
Brian, are you on?
Kim, Madam Chair. Um, so before you, as you know, um, Mass General Law, uh, chapter forty-four, section thirty B, three B allows us to make transfers through July fifteenth from accounts, um, that have needed some additional funding and it can come from any, uh, available source within the appropriated budget. Before you, you have a list of proposed and recommended transfers, um, to be made, um, from town admin to finance committee, the fifteen thousand, which is for the printing of the town warrants. It's a town, it's a finance committee function and, um, we didn't allocate enough in the budget for them for this year. Finance department salaries to finance department operating one hundred twenty thousand, which is primarily due to additional modules, um, for open gov that we've been using, including procurement and some additional trainings, as well as some additional ARPA testing that needed to be done, which we had to fund, um, once the official guidance had come out for that for last fiscal years audit. Um, public works salaries a hundred and thirty thousand to fire department operating a hundred and thirty thousand. As you know, the fire department has been hiring and sending, um, individuals off to school and the academy, which, uh, costs money for the housing and, and other, uh, related costs, including the cost of the equipment and the gear. Uh, street lighting, operating a hundred and ten thousand to town clerk operating a hundred and ten thousand. This is primarily related to the cost of the elections and special town meeting, which was not planned in the cost for the, uh, options technology and so that is needed. Uh, police department six thousand, this is just, um, due to some additional, uh, miscellaneous expenses that we didn't anticipate, they're very minor. Public works salaries one fifty into public works buildings operating, this is related to, um, increased cost in utilities and some additional repairs and maintenance that was done. Uh, public works, same thing in their budget, there was additional money needed, professional services and, and some other accounts. Public work salaries fifty thousand plus operating. This one I would have to go back and look, but I think it's related to professional services related to some of the consulting that Plus has been doing recently and then, uh, five thousand from public work salaries into parking wreck operating. And the largest one is from medical insurance, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred into debt service, this is for short-term interest. Um, due to some of the capital projects, we ended up having to borrow for that we hadn't anticipated starting. The short-term interest was a little bit more than we had anticipated. And so we need six hundred and seventy-one thousand to cover that additional short-term interest, all told, one million, four hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars in the general fund.
Any questions from the other board members?
What about the second page?
Oh.
Uh, we usually do them one at a time, but we can take them all at the same time, that's fine. So airport operating two hundred and eleven thousand to the ARF truck of a hundred and sixteen thousand and runway six twenty-four ninety-five thousand. This is due to at annual town meeting, they inadvertently rescinded some borrowing authorizations that were needed to cover the additional expenses for these truck, the vehicles and the work on runway six twenty-four. Uh, stormwater operating from, from operating six thousand into salaries. This is due to the competent class, um, study and an increase in salaries from what was budgeted for the stormwater director. And then OAH salaries nine hundred and fifty thousand into operating nine hundred and fifty thousand. Primarily, this is due to the use of the, uh, travel nurses and the continued, um, time period for which we were hiring the outside, um, director of nursing and assistant director of nursing. So those two positions have been filled internally or have been filled with candidates, so that cost should go away for the, the director of nursing and the assistant director of nursing as well. All told, could you scroll down just a little bit, Erica, please, for me? Um, all told, in the enterprise funds, one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand being transferred and increased in the budgets as noted.
Um, any questions? It looks like all board members are here. And.
And I'll, I'll move approval.
Thank you, Matt. Is there a second? Um, all those in favor, Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Brooke Moore. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Brooke Moore. No, she didn't.
Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, I'm in favor as well. That's carries unanimously. Thank you for the detailed explanation. Um, next up, we'll, um, turn it over to culture.
Nope, we have a request for approval of accounts.
Sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
It's, it's just, it's like a regular treasury warrant or accounts payable warrant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does that, does anybody have any questions on this? I don't have the packet in front of me.
There's no packet information on it.
Okay.
Move approval, it's standard, right?
Yep. My understanding from Brian.
Okay, motion from Brooke, second from Tom, all those in favor by roll call, Mal- Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. No, not a problem. Thank you. Now we're on to. That, thank you, everyone. Thank you, finance. Um, now we're on to licensing and petitions. Departmental request, number one, culture and tourism. Is this, um?
Dina.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for having me again. Um, this month, we're, since I submitted, we've gotten three more applications, so I'll just give the updated numbers. For the month of July, we've received sixty-nine, um, special event permit applications. Uh, to date, sixty-two have been completed and seven are still in progress. This month's average event size is a hundred and twenty-two attendees. There are only six public assemblies in this month and all of them are recurring events. Fifty-one of the sixty-nine applications included alcohol service as part of their event. Um, as per the ABCC, nonprofits can serve spirits, wine and beer, and for profits can really serve beer and wine and sixteen of these applications requested to serve all, uh, types of alcohol while thirty-five of them only requested to serve beer and wine. Um, and that is the July report. I can take any questions at this time and if not, we can move to the next item.
Um, any questions? I don't see any hands up. Do you want to just keep going?
All right, great. Um, the next item is a request for a noise bylaw waiver from Boston Pops. Uh, this year's event is planned for August ninth, uh, from three to ten thirty PM. And this waiver is just to ask for the thirty minutes extension past the ten PM, uh, those orders.
Okay, so we didn't need to vote on the report. We do need to vote on this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, it's, would anyone like to make that motion or are there any questions? Like, this is very standard.
This is a yearly standard. Yeah, yeah, standard, we've done it, done it every year. I'll make, move approval.
Is there a second? Okay, all those, uh, so Matt made the motion, Malcolm seconded, all those in favor by roll call, Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Licensing request for review of rental car medallions. I think this is you, Amy, correct?
Yes, it is. Am I? Yep, I'm on, okay. Um, yep, uh, back to rental car medallion. So I submitted, we, you know, left open the waiting list and request list, um, for the past month or two, um, to get any more, um, requests. And what I did, I did a couple of things here and I'm gonna just start out by saying, and I said this to the town, i- if there's ever been a, an issue that I've been confused about more in my career, I don't know what it is. So I'm kind of at the point where I'm not, I, I, I'll just be honest. I, I don't really quite know exactly what to do here, so my goal here is for us to be clear with, um, the next steps and make sure that I'm very clear as to what the board would like to see here. So I want to make sure that that's clear that, um, I want to do. So basically what I'm saying here is that what we're recommending, and it's an opinion, again, please change me if I'm wrong here, is that, um, we have these eight medallions right now that are available and we'd like to kind of work with that. So that's the basis of this right now. And what we're, what we're recommending is that we focus on applications to be accepted for review in a public hearing that we can schedule today. Um, and I want you as a board to confirm that this is true or not, that what we're asking for, um, from this list, anyone on this list, is for an application for an agency license. What the, what the focus is right now, as we're reviewing the bylaws, still working on this, that what we're doing with these eight medallions is asking for an agency, um, application that would be renting vehicles out specifically for commercial rentals or rentals, um, of that vehicle, not personal vehicles, not someone occasionally renting a personal vehicle, that this one, um, item here is to focus on that. So the three terms I have here that we agree on, terms for an agency license application, as I outline here, applications, uh, to be accepted, um, will be for new agencies only for distribution of eight available, eight available medallions and we can discuss how many each and, um, that these are vehicles used for rentals only, no personal vehicles. So I, I, I don't know if someone wanted to make a comment after that. Um, or I can continue? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, yep, so what I'm saying in the discussion, I included the waiting list that I, I got directly from the online forum that we've had since, uh, twenty-twenty-one, uh, for folks interested in, um, having medallions or starting an agency. And we do have one question in there as far as trying to clarify what folks are looking for to determine if they're looking to really start a business here, start an agency and work on vehicles that are just purely rented out. Um, so I sorted it that way and crossed out anyone, I crossed out a couple duplicates, crossed out any current agencies because my understanding is this is for something new and crossed out anyone that just said, oh, I want to rent my Jeep out once in a while. Um, I took those out. So that's what I kind of crossed out so we can kind of see the list and what I highlighted there. So, um, and highlighted those that I thought. Why did I highlight? I might not have highlighted the right thing, but I crossed out those I didn't think would be, um, applicable to this right now. So, um, now we talk about business license. What I'm saying here is that I would like to, uh, give these folks at least the top of the list, the ability to, those that meet the requirements, if we agree on that today, that have, we can set a time thirty to sixty days to submit an agency application in order of the waiting list. That's similar to what we do on the taxi waiting list, which is obviously more established, but they have thirty days to, um, submit information for the vehicle and such, but since this is new, we can certainly extend that. Um, at the time of application, they don't necessarily need to provide vehicle registrations. What you are approving is a license for an agency. Um, we're gonna look for a business setup, look for where the vehicles will be stored, um, make sure it's in a proper location and how they will be picked up, things of that sort. Obviously you need a, a permit for the airport and things of that sort. So I'm asking that applicants be prepared with, um, those three items, make sure it's a proper location, um, um, and available for commercial rentals only, meaning it's not a personal vehicle. So essentially what I'm asking here is for approval to set up a public hearing date for our next meeting or a Wednesday meeting if you wish, and then to communicate to these folks, uh, the process. And I guess the biggest question is how many do we do an RFP type situation or you looking for one new agency? We discuss two medallions each possibly. So I wanted to put the discussion there, but essentially looking to set a public hearing to accept applications for new agencies.
Okay, I'm good with the.
I'll put it up.
Would, oh, who's, um, Matt Fee, please, Matt?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm a, I'm, I'm with you, Amy, I'm confused. And, and, and so here we go. Uh, our definition, a rental agency is a person, business or corporation engaged in the town of Nantucket in the business of renting, leasing or keeping for rent any motor vehicle. That's, um, that's my understanding of our definition. Rental or lease to grant or make available the use, possession or enjoyment of a motor vehicle for an agreed period of time in exchange for an agreed payment, whether or not such transaction is a separate agreement in itself or is part of a broader agreement between the parties there too. So you can't rent a house and add a car to it, is what that basically is saying. So I thought what we were trying to do was have a, uh, was to have, uh, have a lottery for eight of these to go to some Turo people so that they're legal. But it sounds like, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like we're sort of opening more agencies which, and we're defining differently than in our, in our, what we're doing than they're defined in our bylaw now. And I worry that we're gonna set some expectations that, oh, we're gonna have agencies and we're gonna let the peer-to-peer just go. So I, correct me if I'm reading it something in, into this that isn't there. Thank you.
Brooke has her hand up, but Amy, do you want to respond to that first? Okay.
Well, Brooke comment.
So what? I think this is trying to solve the immediate issue of how to distribute the eight medallions. Now, I think the question of, um, Turo and whether, um, whether it is in essence, um, not allowed under the bylaw and if not, how we would enforce it is a bigger conversation that has, that, that, that we need to look at the bylaw itself and enforcement mechanisms. I'm a little worried about issuing medallions to two or three Turo users and creating an inordinate amount of confusion in the community about this without us having figured out the enforcement question around peer-to-peer car rentals. Um, so to me, this establishes a process by which we distribute excess medallions. And then should we, we have talked about recapturing the larger number of medallions that are unused by the existing medallion holders and licensed agencies. And, and once we have, if we decide to go after those and we have those in hand, I think then it's ripe for a conversation around how to manage Turo and whether they should be subject to the requirement of medallions and a system available to issue them to peer-to-peer folks who are peer-to-peer. Um, I understand from a policy point of view where you're trying to get to, Matt, but pragmatically speaking, this feels like a step, uh, to get those issued, um, given some of the legal uncertainty around this that we're under. And, uh, and then, then, and then we have a second conversation around the peer-to-peer again, which I think we need to have. Town meeting was confused and, and declined. Um, there was not a lot of clarity around the amendments in the bylaw among us, never mind town meeting, and I think we need to revisit that at some point, but, um, so anyway, that's kind of where I'm at today.
Matt, and then Malcolm?
No, Malcolm can go. I'll, I'll go after, that's fine. I just, I'll put my hand back up after he gives us his words of wisdom. Thank you.
I know he's gonna leave soon.
Well, I don't have a lot of words of wisdom because I'm confused as well. However, I think there's a step before this and that's recovering the other medallions. We're only talking about eight here and that's, that's a very limited amount. To me, we should recover the unused medallions and then we'd have a much bigger pool to deal with. So I can't support this to recover, recover the others. That to me is next step.
Or should it be required that these eight go to an established rental car business?
I'm not so sure about that.
I don't know. I, Matt, do you want to, or Amy, go ahead. Malcolm, go up, just so you know.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things. And I spent this morning going through all the archives I have from literally the eighties and going back into that. And, um, the way these have all gone over the years is through transfers, like a restaurant will transfer a liquor license. These folks, the, the medallions and the one agency that has the most has gotten them through, uh, transfers with other agencies. New agencies have come up in the past because they made a deal with an agency, they're going on business or downsizing or, or what have you. Um, and then the board just approved the transfer to the new agency. So new agencies have been set up through this transfer. Now, this has been available to everyone really throughout this whole process. We have these unused medallions, which I highly agree and have for years that that needs to be tackled. Um, that, that whole process, but that company or others might not be, have any available. There are some agencies that want more, but they have that ability right now to try to make that deal internally if they want to. We haven't issued seven hundred medallions in probably fifteen years at least, um, in this town. So trying to go and just give eight medallions out to people renting personal vehicles then makes about a hundred others, uh, suddenly illegal. There's ways to look at that bylaw as it's written in a broad manner. That, that's what legal does to incorporate things they might not think of. But again, this was done thirty years ago when this wasn't an issue. So what we're looking to do is try to at least provide a way forward for folks that feel like we're stuck kind of here and recover those unused medallions. And, um, if we want to deal with the online nature of this business as we have in others, we might need to deal with Turo itself rather than the individuals that are using, um, you know, the legal website. It's difficult to kind of do it. It's more inefficient that way to do, you know, all these people out there using it and go to them um, as far as how they manage their users as well. So I would agree that I would rather go and deal with the unused medallion portion of this. Um, but again, that's traditionally, uh, people wanting to start an agency have done so through the transfer of medallions from another company. So.
Um, th- thank you, Amy. Matt, then Tom?
Yeah, first off, it, it's not a question, does it make them illegal? They are illegal. You know, everyone that's on that list is a person, business or corporation engaged in the business of renting, leasing or keeping. Everyone on that list is a rental agency by definite, by our own definition. So I don't want to, uh, and I agree with trying to sort out and give out aid, I think that's important. But I also don't want to set a precedent that is saying that we are viewing things differently. That, oh, we'll start agencies, we'll start some businesses and you don't have to go the traditional manner and buy it from, you know, someone who has it, we're just gonna give it to you. And then we're gonna give it to a bunch of other people who are running illegal businesses too. Just because they happen to do it through the internet, we're gonna like look the other way. I am, I am worried about the precedent we're setting. I, you know, I wouldn't mind saying we're gonna do eight, we're gonna lottery them and they're gonna go to everyone who's an agency that's on the list. However, we want to do it and we're gonna keep working on this, but I worry about our, you know, about, worry about how we're, how we're addressing this now might actually make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Tom?
Yeah, so I guess how I'm thinking of this, and Amy, I agree with you, this is what, maybe the most confusing. This, this actually makes sometime, occasionally makes short-term rentals seem kind of easy. Cause it is so complicated, but, um, I agree with your write-up here. This is exactly where I thought we were going. Um, as, as per our board discussions, I view the unused medallions and the Turo peer-to-peer and what was written in nineteen eighty-six and how that's changed and what's enforceable and what's not in town council and et cetera, et cetera, as separate than this. Uh, I thought we were just dealing with the eight and I don't see, I, I hear Matt's concerns, I don't, I, I don't think he's, he's completely off-base, but I, I don't think that, that by us coming up with a policy to give out the eight medallions, um, in a, in a proper policy that, that, that we set through licensing, um, cha- really changes the, the ground that much. We, we're trying to get these eight, eight unused medallions back into the community, out, back into the business community so they can be utilized. Um, so in and of itself, um, just what's in our packet and what's listed here, I, I, I support this, but also support having the wider discussion.
Um, it surely seems to me like this board is not, uh, all on the same page. So, uh, if, if somebody can try and make a motion, we can keep talking about it. I don't know if there's anybody else who has anything to say. Brooke?
Um, I'm gonna, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, follow, uh, the recommendations from Amy with regard to issuing the eight medallions that have been outstanding for an extended period of time. And that we encourage new agencies to, uh, apply for a license to be an agent, an agency, uh, complying with the requirements of an agency, including commercial location for cars, et cetera. So, um, so that we're not issuing those medallions, um, and allow, well, I'm, 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 I'm pontificating and then I'll follow with the motion so that we're not issuing a medallion to someone who's peer-to-peer sharing out of their home because I think that sets a precedent. I like the idea that we take the eight existing medallions, issue them under the system as it existed before peer-to-peer, consistent with that, uh, with a focus on not issuing them to agencies that have existed here a long time to give new businesses an opportunity, um, to enter the market and create more competition. And that we, we, we very soon agenda and address the question about, um, getting the other medallions back and addressing the peer-to-peer car sharing of vehicles owned by individuals who are gonna rent them part-time. So I, I'm gonna move that we approve this, um, procedure and policy going forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, thank you. So motion made by Brooke, seconded by Tom. I, on the motion, I a hundred percent agree with it, but, um, is there any additional discussion? Any clarification needed for, Erica, are we good? Okay, I, I'm sorry, Malcolm?
I just repeat what I said before. I don't think we're ready yet for this.
I understand. Matt?
Yeah, if this were going out to all, you know, to everyone who, who could say, oh, I have a place to park it, et cetera, and we weren't differentiating, I would support it. But as it is now, I will not support it. I believe it is, uh, it is setting the wrong precedent and heading, heading us down a path of legalizing peer-to-peer, which I don't think the island can handle. I don't think our roads and our infrastructure can handle it. Uh, people can, you know, people can do this now, that you can go to these agencies and make an offer they can't refuse and get into the business. I just, I'm very concerned that we are, you know, that this is gonna set the wrong precedent. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Through you to, to Matt. Uh, Matt, could you, could you describe how you see that as this is a backdoor or slippery slope to legalizing peer-to-peer? I, I'm just not seeing that at all.
Yeah, I, 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 what I'm, what I'm seeing is that we are different, we are differentiating. Right now, everyone on that list is a rental agency. Every one of the person on that list has at least one car that they are leasing or keeping for rent. They are all rental agencies. We are randomly saying, well, we're gonna pick some people and not others on this existing list and we're gonna call them agencies. Even, you know, even though everybody is an agency, we're gonna differentiate and call them agencies. And then I think if I were somebody that was waiting for a light, waiting for a, uh, medallion, I'd be like, wait a minute, by definition, I'm one, why did you skip me? And, and I just think that we are, uh, you know, and, and, and if we're, so I just think there's a bunch of ways that we, we have to, we should be, I, I just, I think that it's, it's heading us toward, you know, expectations that we're gonna add more rental car agencies. You know, not, not under our definition, but just rental car businesses. It's, it's heading toward adding more rental car businesses and I believe it's heading toward, uh, you know, allowing limited peer-to-peer to everybody. And I don't, that is not a direction that I am willing to entertain. I think it's unnecessary. I think it's unnecessary and harmful. So.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would just follow up.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I, yeah, I, I just don't, I, this is just for the eight, and I, it might be semantics, but I think the word "agency" just means they're basically a business, and they need to comply with all the other commercial, et cetera, et cetera, rules of anybody else. So I, I, I think it's a bigger discuss, I don't know, I, we, we can certainly, of course, and, and we do uh, occasionally on, on our board disagree with things, and that, that's fine and healthy. Uh, I, I just, I don't see the, I, I don't see the wider picture here. So I, I will support this under, under what's in our packet for the eight available, which is how I'm viewing it.
Um, anything further? Does it, do we want to go to a vote? All those in favor by roll call? Matt Fee?
No.
Malcolm McNabb?
No.
Brooke Moore?
Yes.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
I will vote in favor. So it's, it's the two vote, and we will see how this goes. And there are broader discussions to be had. Okay, what's up next? I can, can we put the agenda back up? Um, sorry, I can't see very well. Um.
It's the review of the licensing compliance report, but I believe Amy is um, tabling this.
Oh, okay, so let's um, do, do we need, we don't need a motion on that, correct? Okay. Um, and um, we will open a public hearing for a new non-live enter, oh, I lost it. New non, this is, sorry.
New seasonal convivial and general on premise.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Erica. Okay.
Wine and malt beverages.
Amy, do you want to present it, and then I'll go to Matt?
Sure. Um, so we are doing a public hearing. This is for a new seasonal general on premises wine and malt beverages liquor license application. Ozwak Associates LLC DBA Bagel Bar. Uh, the location is 44 Straight Wharf, which is, prior was Oathcraft Pizza um, and Snackle to the right of the High Line there, that location. Um, this location was previously approved uh, in 2024 for an off-premise package store license for Snackle. Um, that was moving their license over from Orange Street. They never um, completed the process with the ABCC. So that license was never uh, issued. It was put back into the quota, and then that license was ultimately issued this year to Provisions, which is just down the Wharf, um, similar type of uh, establishment uh, earlier this year. So that again was for an off-premise package store license. There has not been, this is an on-premise, so the liquor would be consumed on the premise. Uh, there has not been an on-premise liquor license at this location. It was usually just takeout and, and food service prior to that. So this is a new location for an on-premise liquor license. Uh, the request is for um, uh, food service. It's called Bagel Bar. I think there'll be sandwiches as well, kind of a open till maybe like 7:00 PM type of operation. And I wanted to point out a couple of things here. Um, it is a convicular meaning that they prepare food and serve it, uh, have seating for the consumption of it on-premise. That's the definition of a convicular. But it would not be a restaurant liquor license because of the lack of uh, bathrooms on the premise. There's public ones right next door, however, due to the low number of seats, which is about 18, uh, that is under the threshold where the Board of Health requires a bathroom. So we dealt with this with Nantaco, where it was sent back by the state saying it needs to be a general on-premise because they couldn't approve a restaurant liquor license with no bathroom. So I wanted to make that distinction as to why we're calling it a general on-premise license. Generally, that doesn't require food service, but in this case, obviously, it is food service. Um, and I wanted to note that um, before I go over the, the different conditions, the reason that we had to include the violation for a previous license uh, by this applicant, applicant in 2018 is because the, the application requires any and all prior violations by anyone associated with this license to be included. So that's why in this case, we had to include that, include that paperwork when a former license um, uh, managed by Mr. Noize was cited and suspended for a compliance violation. So that is that difference. Um, and then lastly, I go over, as usual, um, the board having broad discretion to determine whether or not a liquor license is needed or for the public good uh, in making a decision. Again, um, the following terms must be considered, and if any denial is uh, considered, it has to be based on one of these things. Generally, the appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location. Again, there have been no on-premise liquor licenses at this location, but obviously, it is surrounded by several. Um, the number of existing dispensaries in town. Um, again, that is our number. We're at a, I think it's 111, but in that area, um, there are several. Again, it's in the middle of everything there. Views of the inhabitants, we did not receive any public comments as of this hearing. Traffic noise and size, again, this location's inaccessible by vehicles. Um, and then the sort of operation that carries the license and reputation of the applicant. And this applicant operates one other licensed establishment on Nantucket, which is Barayoshi. So again, uh, the board having broad discretion, any decision uh, should be based on these things. And I think that is all. I'll leave it to the board now for questions and to discuss with the applicant.
Uh, Matt?
I'm gonna uh, step out on this. Mr. Noize says Terry asked me if I would be willing to sell drinks and uh, in, to his, to this business, and so, you know, he, he saw me at the bread rack when I was stocking bread.
That's fine, you're recusing.
I'm refusing. Thank you. Bye.
For the next two, so bye, okay.
I'm out, I'm not gonna be here. Bye.
Thank you. Uh, Malcolm, I know you need to leave. Do you have any comments or questions?
No, I have no comments.
Brooke, Tom?
John?
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I just want to make sure the applicant, um, I, I, I realized this is for on-premise consumption, right? I'm a little worried about the location, you know, um, bagels and sandwiches is kind of like a takeout. Um, you, you know, pers- could be perceived as a grab-and-go for the boat. And I just, uh, I'm a little worried about the idea of grab-and-go with the alcohol to the boat um, in this location. So I, I, I don't know whether anyone else has that concern, but I do.
Um, well, I'd like to hear the applicant maybe address that. Who's representing the applicant? Jesse Bell? Jesse Bell, can you hear me? I think she's just being let in.
I've let her in. I don't know why.
Jesse, can you, we can't hear you.
She was sent a direct link for the meeting, so maybe she should exit from being an attendee and click the link to be a panelist. I don't, I don't know if that'll help.
Yeah, I haven't heard from her, so I don't know.
Um, I mean, I, I think, you know, 2018, and they've expanded to Obar, and they're, they do a good job. I totally understand Brooke's worry. Um, I'm comfortable with this applicant. I, that space has been a little bit difficult, so I think they'll make a success of it. Um, it is a public hearing. If anybody else is out there who wants to speak?
Jesse just said she was, uh, she, she signed off and she's gonna sign back in.
Okay, understood. I see her. Yeah.
John, if I can just follow up, I mean, I, I, it's not that it's a reason for me not to vote for this. I just want to make a point of it to the applicant and their representative, um, that my concern is out there.
No, totally understand, and I would like to that to be addressed, so it's on our record. Jesse?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, she just texted me. She's trying to figure it out. And I, do we want to talk about the entertainment portion?
That's a separate public hearing.
I know. Do you want me to open both? So Amy can present it while we're waiting? Anybody? I know Malcolm needs to leave, but we'll still have three.
I need to leave soon.
And I need to leave pretty soon too. Oh, Jesse?
Yes.
Yay, okay. Yes, can you address Brooke's question?
Yes, um, so people will not be able to drink alcohol unless they are seated at a table, so. Um, and I was just talking to Terry about this, if, you know, if the tables are full, then people are just gonna have to wait if they want to drink alcohol.
Yeah, we did the same thing with Surfside and Nantaco. Brooke?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just, it, it just the, the sit-down, grab lunch, it takes a little bit longer. You're halfway through a beer and you slide it in your pocket and run to the boat is my concern. And so just as long as you guys can confidently um, assert that you will be monitoring that, I would be comfortable with this application.
And I will say the boat is pretty strict about consuming alcohol that you don't buy on the boat too.
Yeah, true that. And they didn't comment on this application either, right? So.
No, no, the boat's been very good.
It's a, it's a public hearing. Does anybody else have anything to say before we may take a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom?
I would just say that under the test that we have, which is the Balleran v Licensing Board of Boston, um, I think the violation in 2018 is, is kind of water under the bridge at this point, as long as they've been compliant. And um, the applicant is, is aware of the rules, et cetera. And under this, the other criteria, that there's, there's not enough here for me to um, for, for me to vote no on this. Um, a- as, as much as I'd like to see less alcohol served in, in places on Nantucket, under the criteria here, uh, I, I will support this.
No, totally understand. I mean, that was a very long time ago without another incident. And Jody Casper is here if there are any questions. Um, but do we want to close the public hearing? Can I have a motion?
Motion, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, Tom made Malcolm seconded. All those in favor by, oh, oh, to, to close, all those in favor by roll call? Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously on the application.
Move, move approval.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call? Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously, and then on there, the next one.
And Madam Chair, I'm off. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, Malcolm. Have a great, great trip.
Everybody.
Amy, just want to go over it quick?
Yeah, so just a quick, um, this public hearing is, is um, anything with a liquor license. We attach the entertainment license, even if it's a non-live. This would be a non-live um, background music only. They said it's just gonna be interior, but we'll cover the patio. Um, and just um, because some problems are having with others, I want to just standard, quiet background music till 10:00 PM kind of thing, since it is outdoor. So just a standard, non-live uh, streaming uh, background music uh, until 10:00 PM, which is probably well after they close anyway.
Any questions? Any comments? Any motions to close the public hearing?
They're so moved.
Thank you, Brooke. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor? Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye, will close the public hearing. I have no concerns with this. Crew and the yachts are gonna.
Yeah. Yeah. Move approval.
Is, um, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call? Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, and that's it, right?
Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second.
Yes, thank you for the second. All those in favor by roll call? Brooke Moore? Tom Dixon, Don Holgate, Don Holgate, aye. Thanks, everyone. See you soon. We'll see.
Thank you.
Tomorrow. Bye.
All right, ciao.